It is now a little four minutes after five. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First of all, I call for review of the meeting minutes from June 3rd, 2024. Those planning board meeting minutes, you all had a chance to review.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as of right.
Motion to approve. Second, all those in favor? Thank you. Public hearings, a public hearing for J F J Holdings LLC, conditional use permit application at 247 Main Street for proposed Duncan identified as tax map 19 lot 157 zone commercial. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time to receive comments from the public.
The representative is on Zoom.
Good evening.
Good. Good evening. How are you all doing?
Good. Public comments at the public hearing would be anybody that got notified, recent letters, any comments pro and con for this project.
I have not received any at the office.
Nothing, okay? Anything on Zoom for the public hearing?
Well, it's on there. That's all.
We'll give it a couple of minutes in case we have a late arrival.
Yep, I will see anybody.
Okay. I'll call one more time for anybody to speak at the public hearing about this project. Hearing nothing, I will close the meeting, close the public hearings portion of this meeting. Next item, four unfinished business, there's none. New business, Logan Brown Roco subdivision revision lot six, identified as tax map six lots 36B and 36A1, located on Martin Stream Road, Zoned Rural Residential Discussion and Decision. Anybody here to represent Logan Brown?
Yeah.
How you doing tonight?
Good.
Good. If you would, step up. Looking at your project, have you guys got any question about that subdivision shown?
Could you just give us an overview of why you're in front of us today?
So basically, I bought, I live at six Martin Stream. I bought for Martin Stream about a year ago, and I just wanted to change the property line in between the two of them. Four kind of went out and owned behind six, so I just wanted to split the line more evenly. But because it was a subdivision prior, I guess it has to go through planning board approval, so.
So make two long lot, long narrow lots?
Yeah.
Then those lots meet the ordinance, Nicole?
They do. His surveyor, Adam, gave you a stamped plan showing the frontage meeting the ordinance. Everything was done per the local ordinance for size and frontage.
Great.
Nicole, do you know if, because it looks like the original subdivision and the current subdivision, there's another lot split off the original lot four?
A lot four?
Yeah, do you know if this came back for subdivision approval at that time?
It may not have. But this will clean that up.
There have been a few, yeah.
Right.
Should I support them?
Yes.
Yeah, right. This is Adam. He's the one who did the survey.
Yeah, that's him there. Yeah, so my dad and his business partner did it back in 1979. You've seen the original one. It was pretty big, so.
Yeah.
My dad's still alive. His business partner isn't, but um, so that's why the new plan looks a little different from the older one, because the hit was really vague. I don't know if he did it out there. But the new one, we've located a bunch of pins on lots around there. And like Logan said, by doing this, he intends to sell one lot and then keep the piece behind where he's living now. And by dividing it this way, it makes both lots compliant. They're both the same size and have very fine.
Okay. And I did notice a difference from map to map.
Yeah, so will this, does this clean that up too?
It does clean that up, so they get the benefit from his expense.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about this division or the subdivision?
I don't have any, it seems.
Hearing none, I take a motion on that item.
Motion to approve the application.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second, more discussion. Hearing none, I call for a vote. Alls in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you need to sign this plan so you can take it to the registries.
I have some new plans.
Oh, thank you.
Item B under five, J F J Holdings LLC, conditional use permit application for a proposed Duncan at 247 Main Street identified as tax map 19 lot 157 zone commercial. Discussion and decision. You've all a chance to look at the plans, be aware of what they're trying to do.
Could the developer just give us an overview of the project, please?
Sure, yep. So for the record, my name is Chris York. I'm the engineer with Greenman Peterson, representing the applicant. And I will share my screen for you. So I'll show you the existing conditions planned first. So obviously, we're at 247 Main Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site, but there is an existing two-story wood frame drawing in the middle of the property. There's also seven mobile homes along the back and side of the property. There's a driveway that basically, basically subdivision road that services the seven units with their own individual driveways. There's the driveway for the unit up front, and there's a third driveway along the northerly edge of the property line. So the site's all developed, it's a tree line, the very rear of the property, but it's all developed with pavement to, you know, some grass and some shrubs. So we will be removing two of these driveways, the northerly driveway and the middle driveway. We'll be keeping the southerly driveway, but renovating it to meet DOT standards. So I can show you the, I'll show you the pretty picture here, so. One driveway into the site, so it's a proposed 1,848 square foot Duncan with the drive-through. We're gonna landscape all around the entire property. So I know it's residential on the southerly side, so we're gonna show proposed fence along the entire length of the property, as well as some shrubs, some shrubs along the rear of the property, as well as the front. So we're showing parking in front of the building, three spaces with the handicap spot, and some angled parking on the side, and then the rear as well. Could propose dumpster up back. We do show a connection to the sidewalk from Main Street into our property as well. Like I said, we're showing one new driveway into the site, one way you get in, one way out. We said these two driveways will be closed, so we'll reconstruct the sidewalk along Main Street. Uh, I could show you a little bit of the details of the drainage utilities as well. Give me one second for this to load. For the drainage, currently right now, there's no drainage on site. Everything flows from the back of the property, just kind of sheet flows off the site onto Main Street. So we're gonna catch, basically split the property in half. The southerly part of the property will drain into a bioretention filter, which will treat the storm water before it discharges out to the outlet. So the outlet of the pipe is gonna be connecting into this existing 24-inch covert that runs under Main Street. So half the property will run through a bioretention filter before it discharges into that. The other half of the site will discharge into a catch basin and into a treatment system, treatment device, before it discharges out to the existing pipe. Utilities will be showing, typical utilities will be connecting to water. A new two-inch water service we're showing going into Main Street. The sewer, there's a pretty large trunk line that runs along the northerly edge of our property underneath a bunch of these mobile homes. So we're gonna tie into the sewer on our property somewhere. We don't know exactly where the manhole is. I talked to the DPW director. He believes it's under this first or second mobile home. So once we get out in the video and this mobile home is removed, we can find that manhole. We can tie into the manhole directly. That water will tie in with a new two-inch service. Also, I have a proposed 1,500 gallon grease trap, which will be, you know, so before this, before the F1 gets out to the main, it'll go through the grease trap first. We have a proposed trace former as well, underground electric. So we'll tie in from the nearest utility pole at the northwest corner of the property, and then we'll go underground to the building itself. And there's no gas over here, so we have a propane tank on site, proposed propane tank, which is, it's on here, propane tank, it gets out back here. So other than that, so we talked about drainage, oh, here's the propane tank, sorry, well, that, out back here. So for any of the runoff that's running, kind of coming off the railroad bed out back, we're gonna catch it with a stone swale, so it doesn't sheet flow onto our pavement. We'll catch it with a stone swale and kind of discharge it out to where it kind of goes now. Hopefully, everything kind of pitches to this little point just off our site where the existing 24-inch cross culprit is. I could show you, the free picture shows the landscape, which I've talked about. And erosion control we show around the perimeter of the property as well. So that's kind of the frickin' dirty of the site. I could take any questions you have for me.
Questions or comments?
I don't know if anyone from the public is still in the public hearing, or will we move on from that?
We moved on from hearing.
Okay. So, okay, I'm sorry. So he just did the overview of the site plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's still permitted they have not received yet.
The DOT curb permit?
Traffic movement, the driveway entrance permit.
Exactly.
And the two-inch water line, is that, have they found that yet, or? Something about the two-inch water line.
Yeah, Chris, is there a plan to bring a two-inch water line into the site within the next couple of weeks?
Uh, we've got a, so when we meet with DOT, we're supposed to have a scoping meeting with them probably later this month. We've tried to get some information from them as to whether the moratorium is a hard moratorium with no, you know, no cutting in the road allowed, or if they'll allow us to cut into the road with more of a, you know, kind of a, you know, cutting into the road, but, you know, being able to pave on like 30 feet or each side of it, something. We haven't heard an answer on that yet, but we do not, we do not have a two-inch service into our site yet. It's just a proposed service.
My understanding is that the road will be under moratorium and that you will be required to do the cut on both sides if you dig within the roadway within the next five years.
Okay, yeah, we, yeah, that's good to know. Yeah, we've been trying to get an answer from DOT and they haven't been,
They're...
They haven't been very forthcoming with their answer, so.
Typically, DOT does not have a moratorium in the shoulder of the roadway, however, outside of the white line, so I'm not sure where the water main is located. But if you were able to get away with not excavating into the travel lane, then it wouldn't be subject to moratorium, but I think it's unlikely that you'd be able to complete a tap.
It is, it is right on, appears to be right on the white travel line, you know, the bike lane line, so it's right there, right on the line.
Have you reached out to the, reaching to traffic engineers who do the road open permits to see what they have for guidance? Typically, they're...
We have, yes. We've tried to, yes. They have not responded to our question about the moratorium. So let's say that we're gonna meet with them later this month as part of the, we submitted the DOT application back in May for the curb cut. So we're gonna meet with them, hopefully later this month, once they can get us on their schedule.
Okay.
But we'll keep, we'll keep trying with DOT in terms of, you know, how strict the moratorium is and, you know, how many, how far above beyond we need to go in terms of installing this two-inch water if it happens down the line versus now.
And the developer isn't interested in installing this now prior to pavement?
He hasn't indicated that to be the case at the moment. I will keep asking him.
Okay.
So I brought it up, you know, I probably brought it up back in April or May and didn't really get much of an answer from him, but I'll keep trying.
Because there's probably a couple of weeks at most before it will be final paved.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So that being said, is that another condition of approval? This, this water connection that they need but may not be able to get?
I don't feel that it's a condition of approval for the planning board, no.
Okay. Whereas DOT is?
Yeah, the DOT permit for, absolutely.
Okay.
For the traffic movement permit. But any sort of excavation within the DOT right-of-way wouldn't necessarily be a condition of approval for the plan.
Right, but it may...
That may hinder development, but...
Right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I do have a couple more. The six-foot-high vinyl fence that's going along the southerly side, is that
Yep.
a solid fence? Is there, is it slats?
It would be solid fence, yes.
Okay.
I didn't want to specify a specific type, probably a white vinyl fence. It could be stockade, but it just, I want to make sure it's a privacy fence, it'll be a solid fence.
Okay. Will the sign out by the road be illuminated?
Uh, let me, let me check the signage plan on that.
I didn't see any wires going out to it on the utility plan, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I don't believe it'll be illuminated. I can double-check that. If it does, I can add a, you know, show a utility line out to it. Trying to find the...
The developer does have the sign ordinance, so just want to make sure that it isn't compliance with the sign ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. Is it, is it allowed to be illuminated under the sign ordinance? Is that what you said?
Yes, it would be.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, okay, okay.
I was just curious. I know a lot of people watch these meetings, so neighbors in the area may be interested to know if it's gonna be illuminated or not.
Okay.
In the letter along with the application, you indicated that the lights would be new dark sky compliant site lighting. Could you just give us a little bit of an overview around what that type of lighting is and how it benefits abutting properties?
Yeah, so it's a pretty typical light that you see in most new, you know, parking lots. It's a kind of a, it's kind of a picture of it, you know, the greatest picture, but, so it's, you know, so it points straight out and all the light shines straight down. It's just kind of a black fixture. So it's not angled, it's pointed, I said, it's pointed straight down. It meets all the, you know, the standards now for lighting, you know, dark sky compliance. It's no, no spillage of light onto any neighboring properties based on the lighting plan we provided. So we show, we show, so we show one at the, kind of the entrance one, but halfway back, and one by the dumpster, and a couple more along the southerly side or northerly side of the property, and one out front here. So we show six lights. And they're 16-foot tall, you know, with a two-foot base, so 18 feet tall in total.
I didn't have any other questions. I thought it was a well-done plan. I appreciate all the detail around the landscaping or the...
Oh, yeah, yes, we, yes, we're glad, you know, glad to show, you know, as much landscaping as needed. I know that was a concern brought up originally, so, especially with the residents to the south. So we're happy to provide a lot of buffer for those people especially.
Anything else? Questions or comments? Finding of fact, Nicole?
That would be your next move, if you're ready.
Yes, very good.
Do we need to do a motion before that, or do we do the motion?
We motion and vote after the vote.
Do a motion to continue to move to findings?
I take a motion to continue finding of fact.
So move?
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you. A conditional use finding of fact, 247 Main Street, construct a new structure, 1,848 square feet Duncan with site improvements, site redevelopment, tax map 19 lot 157, commercial land use district. A site plan to scale showing a minimum location of existing and proposed structures and distance from lot lines, water bodies, water supply, and sewers disposal facilities. Submitted to the planning board with application, site plan sheet five dated June 19th, 2024. If the market value of the project exceeds $80,000, a copy of plans and specifications for its construction shall be required. Building outline at 1,848 square feet on site plan sheet, a stamped plan will be submitted for the building permit. Existing topographical contour, contours are shown on the site plan. Proposed grading at contour intervals not greater than five feet as shown on the site plan. Site improvements as highlighted on the site plan, new building, new parking lot, new driveway entrance location. Pedestrian and vehicle travel ways and parking areas, travel ways are shown on the site plan. A new entrance shown. Landscape and buffer areas as shown on sheet nine and on the site plan, 220-foot vinyl privacy fence six feet high and plantings as shown. Stormwater erosion control structures as shown on sheet eight. Erosion control plan, stormwater drains shown on sheet nine. Kennebec Water District, public water and public sewer connections and power lines and outside installations of any machinery or materials as shown on sheet seven, utility plan. Kennebec Water District available in Main Street, two inches water line needed. The public sewer runs along the property and connection will be made on-site, and the electrical pole exists on-site and will provide power underground to the building. Estimate of vehicle trips to be generated by the development and any modifications to the public roads which may be necessary to absorb traffic. Main DOT application for a traffic movement permit shows trips generated at this Duncan will be estimated at 223 vehicle trips. They propose an AM weekday peak hour to have 67 vehicle trips, weekends 157. MDOT permit has not yet been issued. They submitted to the formal traffic movement permit application to MDOT on May 20th, 2024. A list of names and addresses of landowners within 200 feet of the property submitted with the application. Letters to the butters were mailed out on June 21st, 2024, notifying of tonight's public hearing. And on this application via Zoom meeting and/or Six Union Water Street, a legal notice was placed in the morning sentinel on Sunday, June 23rd, 2024. If a vehicle trip estimate is more than 50 vehicles per peak, per hour at its peak hour of usage, submitted to Main DOT, the traffic movement permit application again on May 20th, 2024. No permit has been issued yet for Main DOT. A statement from Public Works Director, a letter from Bruce Williams dated May 28th, 2024, that stormwater drains and sewer line drains can be accessed on the lot without entering Main Street. They are adequate and acceptable. Analysis of potential environmental impacts as shown on GPI Engineering's Stormwater Management Systems Plan. If the development utilizes public water or sewer, an estimate of demand on the respective systems. Email from Kennebec Water District requesting a two-inch line. Letter from Bruce Williams, Public Works on the sewer connection. An erosion control plan prepared by Rashid Professional Engineer as designed by GPI Engineers, C sheet eight. A stormwater management plan prepared by Rashid Professional Engineer as designed by GPI Engineers, C sheet six. Findings: The development will not create unsafe or unhealthy conditions within the neighborhood in which it is located and shall not create or exacerbate effects upon neighboring properties. This proposed Duncan project is in the Commercial Land Use District and has been designed to be in compliance with the requirements of the district. The structure is set back from the roadway to allow vehicles stack in line and in the parking lot. The dumpster will be enclosed on an impervious surface. The development will not create or add traffic congestion at or below level D of service as defined and will not create unsafe traffic movement on public roads. Unknown yet, the applicant is waiting for a reply from Main DOT for a driveway entrance permit. The applicant has applied on May 20th, 2024 for a traffic movement permit. The permit has not yet been issued. The development will not result in undue reduction of air or water quality or wildlife habitat and will not cause undue flooding or soil erosion. The proposed project will not result in the reduction of air or water quality or wildlife habitat and will not cause undue flooding or erosion, or soil erosion. See the stormwater site plans and the project design and the erosion control measures to be used. The development will not, to the greatest extent feasible, preserve historic, prehistoric, or archaeological resources. There are no known, identified historic, prehistoric, or archaeological resources on this site. The development will not cause an undue strain on public facilities, services, including public roads, water supply, sewers disposal, solid waste systems, police, education, or other services. This project will not cause an undue strain on public facilities, services. The applicant has sufficient financial and technological capacity to complete the development. The applicant, J F J Holdings LLC, owns other Duncan developments and has the financial capacity to complete the project. The development is consistent with Fairfield Comprehensive Plan and in compliance with state and federal laws, as well as ordinances, rules, regulations of the town, including the performance standards of the land use ordinance unless the board acts to waive said standard. The business expansion is consistent with Fairfield's comprehensive plan in a designated growth area in the commercial zone. Conditions of approval?
I make a motion that we accept the application as presented with a condition of approval that the MDOT entrance permit is received prior to...
Start construction. Permit, drive-in permit?
Yeah, drive-in permit.
Okay.
The building permit.
Are there any other conditions?
What about the traffic movement permit? They need that also?
That's the same.
That's the same guy.
Or the same thing.
Yeah.
Yep, DOT and traffic permit and trips, and, yep, same guy. He's a little busy right now.
Yeah.
I have a motion for a condition of the DOT permit curb cut as the only condition of approval. Is there anything else? Hearing none, I call for a...
I need a second.
Dip second on that.
Second, I need a second on that motion, motion second. All those in favor? Very good. Your, your last hurdle is going to be that water connection.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you don't get that, if you don't get that water connection, I can't get those frozen coffees from you guys.
I will check it again tomorrow with the applicants, see what he wants to do.
I will send that to you tomorrow, Chris. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Happy fourth.
Happy fourth.
Good night.
Thanks. Goodnight.
Next item on the agenda, items by public. Hearing none, clerk of the planning board.
I don't have anything waiting or questions or anything to let you know about that's pending. I haven't, there's one solar project from a few years ago out on, it would be off Norwich Walk Road where it turns to Ohio Hill Road. There's a farm there that was proposing one, but they have not come forward yet with a formal plan, just their sketch plan from two years ago.
And whatever happened to the solar farm on Fairfield Street? Is that still pending?
The one, they did not construct it yet, so, on the old county road?
No.
No?
On the Fairfield Street, the old farm... On the Fairfield Street, uh, the old farm.
Oh, yes, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yep.
They reached out last month and they are still thinking of moving forward, but they haven't submitted a formal application. But I would think they might next month.
Okay.
Yeah. It decreased in size.
Okay. Any other items by members?
I got a question. When you're reading the the facts, do you really have to read the whole thing or just mostly the highlighted? It repeats itself a lot.
It does, and if you noticed
You skip all of a sudden.
Been skipping a little bit.
I think maybe you should do that more often.
Well, thank you. I don't need to stand, sit here and read. The ones that say N A, I completely skipped from that one.
You should.
And the ones that seem to repetitive, uh, for example, statement from Public Works, I skipped that any proposed improvements to the town roads inadequate and acceptable. I'm trying to paraphrase to expedite the meetings for the public's
Yeah, because it's kind of redundant.
Right. Now, we've discussed the DOT permit. It followed in this document six or eight times. However, it's an important item because it's because if he doesn't get that, they don't act, someone's gonna pay for a water line connection and pay for a lot more paving. So, uh, you know.
It's in his own interest.
Absolutely, and I think Max has been talking about this for two meetings, so it's no surprise. But who put money that it'll go for the last minute, right after the moratorium's put on?
I would just hate to see the development not be able to move forward due to something that could have been
Apparently, apparently, there's enough money on the table that that doesn't matter to them, apparently.
Yep.
Okay, because if you or I were doing that, that water line would be sticking out of the ground, oh, forty feet inside, under a trailer or something. Uh, no, the wheels turn very slow at the top, we know that. Um, and we can only make, we can't even make suggestions technically. We can just bring it up and say, hey, do you have that covered? And you heard him, he's gonna follow up tomorrow on a two-inch water line. And that was required by the water district, correct? I mean, there are a bunch of one-inch lines in there, or three-quarter maybe because of the
The plans indicate that there are three-quarter inch water services to the property, and the email that was provided from the water district indicated that they would require a two-inch line.
So there are six one-inch water lines going in there, all these trailers, all, or do they all tap off one inch?
From the plan, there are three water services to the property currently.
Okay, for seven trailers, for six, for a house and six trailers, okay. And that's why you guys probably want a two-inch water line now, I get it. Okay, any other items by the member, by members? Hearing none, record-breaking meeting again. Push right through for Nicole to get home for supper. I'd call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second, thank you. All those in favor? Thanks for coming.